Good evening, welcome to the May 14th of my TV, the Manchester County Council. Then with pledge religions.
Can everybody make sure your mic is on? Can you make sure your mic's on?
All right, before we proceed with the business meeting, we have a public hearing. We have a motion to close the general business meeting, open a public hearing ordinances two thirty-seven, two thirty-eight, and two thirty-nine.
I make a motion, we close the public, we close the meeting, we open a public hearing on ordinances two thirty-seven, two thirty-eight, and two thirty-nine.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, discussion, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
All right, so entering a public hearing ordinances two thirty-seven, two thirty-eight, two thirty-eight, and two thirty-nine, which pertain to the budget. Can we introduce this budget, which has the general fund and all its parts, the water, the enterprise fund, sewer enterprise fund, and the tax rates for each. Did we receive any public comment over the last thirty days?
We did not.
Did it happen?
No, sir.
Does anybody here in town tonight wish to speak on the budget? I know a lot of you guys were here last month, some of you guys were here last month. Anybody that wishes to speak on the budgets, appropriate prompt before we go into it later on? Maybe on the council received anything that should be brought up in this time?
No.
All right, hearing done, do we have a motion to close the public hearing ordinances two thirty-seven, two thirty-eight, and two thirty-nine, and reopen the general business meeting?
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, moving on, April ninth minutes, you should have a copy of those, I sent those out as well, any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I had to revise them, to Jen making motion to close, Emma in the second motion, you see it right there by everybody.
Amendment minutes as stated, any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected by Ms. Baldwin?
I'll make a motion. Please. I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as corrected by Ms. Baldwin.
I'll second it.
Motion second, any other discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. March two thousand nineteen treasurer's report, we have the check register. Last month, we have a motion to receive the treasurer's report from March.
I'll make a motion that we receive the March two thousand and nineteen treasurer's report.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion second, any other discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Then we have the check register for April, the motion to receive the check register, and the treasurer's report to follow.
I'll make a motion, we receive the April two thousand and nineteen check register.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, any other discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Moving right along, mayor's report. Just a couple announcements, Hughes, I know we've talked about this a couple of times already, we'll do our best to continue to get the message out, either at your houses or your neighbor's house, please help us to pass along this message. There has been a change in recycling over the past year or so, Hughes will not pick up any recycling if they have, if they have or see plastic bags in them, those plastic bags such as like the Walmart bags, those things that people are putting in there, or maybe they're, I need to speak up?
Yeah, can you bring your little-
Oh, the microphone was off.
Oh.
There you go. And I'm not talking loud. Okay, I'll start over with the mayor's report. Please do not put plastic bags in your recycling, help spread that message for us, if you see them with your neighbors, if you have use in common driveways like I do, those type of plastic bags from Walmart or Target or that grocery store, those, those clog, the sorters that they're using, so Hughes has stopped doing it, they're just gonna, they're gonna leave it there. We definitely want that stuff to wind up in the recycling as opposed to the trash, so please try to help spread that word. Yard waste pickup is every Friday through November. As a reminder, yard waste consists of grass clippings, leaves, small branches, not in excess of three feet or four inches in diameter, branches should be bundled in armful loads, helps us get our guys to get those onto the truck fast so that we can get that, that part of their thing done and move on to the other things they have to do. Yard waste should also not be mixed with mulch, dirt, residential refuse, including pet waste, residents should place the yard waste on the curb side Thursday evening, because they get started pretty early on Friday mornings, getting that stuff done, either in a designated trash can or some sort of bin, or again, armful bundle loads, so they can kind of pull up to your house and get that and move on. Town election, one week from today, I know Westminster and I guess New Windsor and Hampstead have theirs tonight, so best of luck to those candidates in that election, we have an election here, one week from today, voting is held in this room, and we're held in this room again, right? The mayor position and two council members will be elected, the term for the office is four years. I know there's, we have not received as much notoriety as maybe in the years past, or some of the other towns this year, it's not as highly contested, but please still show up and vote, you know, it's still, is meaningful, you can have write-ins and those sort of things, so it's meaningful that people show up and vote and have a voice. We'll have a reorganizational meeting Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, here, the newly elected mayor and mayor and council members, we'll meet at seven thirty, we'll reelect council vice president and begin talking about priorities for the next four years. And then finally, as a reminder, offices closed, May twenty-seventh, please note the trash pickup will be pushed back one day to Thursday, May thirtieth, due to the landfill being closed on Memorial Day. All right, well that, turn it over to the town administrator.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council members of the community, we'll go ahead and go over a review of the April two thousand and nineteen administrative report on the Sheets project, that is moving forward, the gravity enforced main sewer lines have been installed and relocated, the footers enforcements of foundation walls have begun, the underground storage tank installation has been completed, and the building floor slab is very close to being poured, probably within a day or two, so that project is moving forward quickly. The package goods store, the interior work is moving forward, the exterior work has started again per approvals from the planning zoning commission. The commercial lease for thirty-two fifteen Long Lane, the building has been emptied, the draft lease has been sent to Carroll Community Foundation for review and any comments that they may have. As you see in the agenda, we'll talk a little bit about the introduction of chapter one thirty-nine peddling and soliciting, and also chapter two thirty-three, as it relates to unlicensed vehicles and private sales. I've put in front of you an administrative policy for water billing procedures, we can talk a little bit about that now. Staff created a work group to streamline our water meter reading and our billing system, and this was one of the items that came out of our work sessions. One of the things that we do, it seems like we go over and beyond to work with some of the landlords, as the town code states, being a rental property owner is a commercial venture. What we've been doing is, we've been working with some of the tenants and actually billing the tenants. We feel that to save time and money, as far as the town is concerned, that we will bill the landlord direct, so we do not have to track these tenants' damp. I checked with a few other municipalities, and they do it the same way, where they actually bill the owner of the property or the landlord. We don't have a problem reading the water meters, that's minimal time, but we will generate X number of bills for that property, those bills will be sent on to the landlord, the property owner, and it's his responsibility to get the money from his tenants and present one check or multiple checks to the town. So we would like your approval on that. That is an administrative policy.
Do you want to handle that now before we move on?
We can do it now, or we can do it later, I guess, Mr. Mayor.
You guys want to go ahead and bring that up now, so we can just kind of move on? So, I know we talked about this a little bit last month as well, I personally think it's a process improvement, and it helps streamline some of the work in the town, anybody have any issues with?
We actually had this originally set up to begin July first, but we thought to get this information out to landlords, we actually backed it up to October first, so it would be an additional reading. All the landlords will be sent this individually, so they'll know exactly what's going on, so when October first comes around, they'll know exactly what's taking place.
I know after this, it was introduced as a possibility last month, we didn't receive anything in, in the town, any comments?
We did not, we did not, no.
Well, we have a motion to approve this administrative policy, to bill landlords only and not property residents.
I'll make a motion that we accept this administrative policy, where we bill, bill the landlords and not the tenants.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Very good. Moving right along, under code enforcement of rental housing, you have a copy of the monthly code enforcement update, under miscellaneous items, we put out a request for qualifications in regards to engineering firms, and we are in the very beginning stages of an upgrade to our wastewater treatment plan in regards to E N R, enhanced nutrient removal. I know our director of public works will probably talk a little bit more about that, we had a very good response, we had eleven responses back from eleven different engineering firms, and we're under, we're working right now to review all of those as we speak, so I know the director will have some other information on that. As I reported to the mayor and council last month, we did receive a grant for recycling toters from Cleanup Green Up Maryland, I've ordered a hundred units, I've also supplied you with a rendering of what those units are going to look like, we are going to use some funds from our solid waste budget to offset the cost of a hundred toters. Our group, our staff is still looking into how we're going to distribute those, we're looking at possibly distribute those in the York Street corridor, and we can monitor those accordingly, as, you know, our staff travels York Street all the time, to see how, you know, readily they're being used, and if they're used to their fullest extent. We also are going to supply some of our town facilities with recycling, with these toters also. So it's a one-time deal, we have to make it clear to the residents, if they receive one, that if it breaks, please don't call us, they're very heavy duty, but if they break, don't call us, it's a trial run, we'll see how it works out and go from there, so. Sustainable Communities Work Group, that meeting is scheduled to be held on May twenty-second, here at Town Hall at ten a.m. Our staff is still waiting final renewal approval, it's been back and forth, I guess Kelly, two times already, so we're still waiting to get our approval on that. The mayor alluded to it a little bit, I've supplied you with some pictures of what's happening around town during our weekly yard waste pickup, and we did everything we can to try to get the yard waste standards out there to the public, but unfortunately, they're still, on a weekly basis, we, we get notified by our waste hauler of what's happening out there. As you can see in some of those photographs, the waste hauler and the town work very closely where we tag those piles, and make sure that the residents know that they can't be setting that out. Standards that we go by, of course, the branches can't be in excess of three foot or four inch in diameter, the branches must be bundled in armful loads, yard waste should not be mixed with mulch, dirt, or any residential refuse, and including pet waste, and residents should place long waste curb side on Thursday evening for Friday's pickup. We are very pleased with how this program is going over the last several years, unfortunately, we have some residents that are taking advantage of the system, so we're trying to get the word out as best we can. That's it, any questions for me?
What's the size of this toter? I have something that's this style from Hughes for regular trashes, it's quite large.
Yes, I did some research on that, and that's sixty-five gallons, and both Hughes and the county folks said that is the, the best size to go with, is a sixty-five gallon. Steve, what's coming out of the other budget to supplement this?
A solid waste budget.
How much?
And we are, we are okay on that, we have funds to do that, to cover that yet.
Right, how much?
It was twelve hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yes, we received four, four thousand through the grant, but to get my, my, my limit was a hundred toters, so to make that difference, and also to do the embossment on the toter with the town seal, that was a one-time setup charge of two hundred and fifty dollars, so yes, it was about twelve hundred dollars.
And when are we going to reevaluate? When, how long's the pilot period for?
I would say probably six months, and that'll give us a good idea, and also, if it is working, I'm going to reapply again for the same grant, to see if we can get some more, you know, so.
I know we're going to have a lot of people asking when they see him, that's why I'm-
Yeah, and again, it's a trial run, we're going to, as we deliver the toters, there will be a letter attached to the toters, that, you know, please be advised, this is a, it's basically the same process that the county used, it's a one-time deal, if it breaks, please don't call us, you know, and they're, they're very sturdy, I mean, I, I've, you know, seen them in-
And I purchased the same one at Lowe's, pretty much, so.
But it's, but it's a trial run, and, and we, we will be monitoring, you know, your recyclables to see how, how well you do.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to Director Public Works.
Good evening, mayor and town council, please see the water and wastewater data report should be in front of you, if you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer anything you may have. All good? Okay. Okay, for the DPW report, let's see, for, in our water department, we just had one leak, you know, on the public side located by Manchester Field Staff, that was on Walnut Street, that was repaired on fifteenth of April, there was one water leak on the private side, and that was repaired on the twentieth of April, that was on Park Avenue. At Park Avenue and Mini Drive, we had a planned water main valve replacement, and that was done by our field staff, went very well, and that was completed on the eighteenth. Our hydrant flushing program on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth was a success, that was for the springtime, and we planned one for the fall, we don't have a date picked out for that yet. At our Howland Drive wellhouse, we ran into, to electrical issues, that, these repairs have been completed, and again, by Manchester staff. For wastewater, we had one sewer backup on the private side cleared by the resident that was on overlooked court, we didn't have any sewer backups on the public side last month. At our Westminster Street sewer pump station, we, as well, we had electrical issues there, not related, it was just a coincidence, again, we did that in-house, and I do need to add that between the two electrical issues, we saved about ten thousand dollars by doing it ourselves, we had an outside company come in and give us a price, and we did it all internally. As Steve mentioned, the Sheets project that's moving forward, the sewer tie-in was on the twentieth of April, I do, as, also as Steve mentioned, the E N R upgrade, we're limping forward with that, we're, I created a panel to review the submittals, we got eleven submittals in for, to bring in engineering firms, we're gonna, we're going to shortlist out to four or five, and the next step, they'll respond to an R F P, which is a request for proposal, that's the next step on that. Maintenance and roads, the street cleaning program is ongoing, and that will continue to mid to late October. The spring brush pickup, that's been completed, that was the sixteenth of April. In our parks department, the spring cleanup and mosh, mashing has been completed, and mowing has begun. For stormwater management, we had a pipe repair, storm, storm drain pipe repair on Valley View Court, the monthly mowing has begun at our stormwater management ponds, and lastly, our Eckert's Stormwater Management Project Phase One has been completed, and it turned out very well, and that was on the twenty-sixth of April, that was done by Stanballs excavating. And that's all I have. Any questions on anything?
No, thank you.
No.
Thank you.
Thanks Rodney. All right, Chief of Police, a little under the weather tonight, so he's not here, he did provide a report though, so I'll provide a summary of that, answer questions, if they exist the best I can. For April twenty, twenty nineteen, responded to a hundred and seven calls for service, thirty-seven dispatch calls, directed units out of town, thirty-seven were out of town to assist nearby police units, criminally charged seven adults investigating release of three juveniles, two part-one crimes, both for theft, were cleared. The three juveniles who were investigated and released were the persons responsible for stealing street signs in the Halle neighborhood, which accounts for one of the part-one crimes, one of the two for this month. All three are Manchester Valley High School students, three signs were recovered and put back into place, we're all good there, they're in the process of sending fine notifications to all three homes. Second part-one crime involved a theft of medication, which identifies being as a family member involved, no criminal charges. Breakdown for criminal charges for the month is as follows, one domestic assault, two DUI arrests, two traffic arrests, two controlled dangerous substances, which were heroin, and four clearances for theft. Overdose totals for the month, the sheriff office is reporting a hundred and twenty-nine overdoses year-to-date, sixty of which were heroin or fentanyl related, and there were, there have been seventeen fatalities in Carroll County identified as heroin or fentanyl overdoses. The municipality totals are as follows, Westminster's thirty-seven, Mount Aries seven, Tonnie Town twelve, Hampstead four, Manchester two, and Sykesville one. The April two thousand and nineteen traffic enforcement areas include York Street, Park, Westminster Streets, Halle, Charmel, and Main, enforcement for May will be directed to Mindy, Southwestern, Westminster, Bachman, Michelle, Augusta, and all stop signs. April statistics are as follows, twenty-two state citations, nine repair orders, and a hundred and thirty-five warnings, the majority of which were speeding, stop sign, and other violations. And is the police report, any questions on that? We do have an action item, Greg Kelly with?
Yes.
We talked last month about the portable radios for the police department, you know, state the issue, the best of my understanding is that they're moving from one type of radio to another, we need to upgrade the radios so that they're able to continue to communicate with the county system. So we have a two-year plan to upgrade all of the radios, received information, so this is from Carroll County to purchase four portable radios from Motorola Solutions for twenty thousand nine fifty and four cents. In the FY nineteen budget, which is the one we're wrapping up here by June thirtieth, there are anticipated savings in the following areas, salaries, auto insurance, overtime, and supplies, so the police have been operating under budget most of the year, some of that is just due to staffing, right, so we, we had a half a position staffed, we had a retirement, we had a position turnover, so we did not use all of the funds that were budgeted for FY nineteen. Therefore, we're recommending, based on this information, Chief Hess and staff recommend purchasing the radios in this year's budget, and then we will plan for the future going forward. I miss anything, Kelly? You good? She should have a copy of this memo in front of you, so as such, do we have a motion to use FY nineteen budget dollars from the, those four buckets to purchase the four portable radios in the amount of twenty thousand nine hundred and fifty and four cents?
I'll make a motion that we use the two thousand and nineteen FY budget money for the, to purchase the four portable radios from Motorola Solutions for twenty thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and four cents.
I'll second the motion.
The motion in a second, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. All right, moving on, ordinance, let's, we'll break these up one at a time, ordinance two thirty-seven is our budget, our budget maintains the current tax rate of twenty-one point six, which I think it's been at for, for several years now. This budget was introduced in April, something that the town council and staff has worked on, really going back to the very beginning of the year. I know we had a public hearing since then, if anybody has come in, is there anybody that would like to make a comment or speak on the budget before we move forward? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve ordinance two thirty-seven, which is our general budget?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance two thirty-seven, which maintains the current tax rate of point two one six.
I'll second the motion, sorry.
The motion in a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Ordinance two thirty-eight and two thirty-nine really go together, so two thirty-eight is the waters, and we'll handle them one at a time, but it's the water, two thirty-nine is the sewer. About two and a half years ago, maybe, I guess going three years from now, we had a study here in town to look at our, our water and sewer rate structure, what we're charging, how we're charging, how we're breaking up the base fees, the things that are mandated by the state from us, like the, you also like the flush tax, you all know what the flush tax, which is really just a conduit for that, we're charged with collecting it and sending it in full to the state, and then usage fees, so, you know, obviously we want to promote the conservation of, of water and to keep, you know, we can't fill pools and do those sort of things, when we have a green, yellow, red system for if everything's pretty abundant like it is now, versus if we're in semi-drought conditions or very drought conditions. What we found is that we were drastically undercharging for water and sewer, I know it seems like it's a lot, and it is, it's a lot every, every quarter that we charge it, but water's very expensive for us to produce here, because we're all, we have no surface water, it's all wells, so we've been moving, and we created a five-year step program that we evaluate each year, but we're moving more towards a base fee model, with a lower percentage of the fees being based on usage for both water and sewer. So what you're seeing here is step three out of those five years in that. So ordinance two thirty-eight increases the water unit fee five dollars from twenty-two to twenty-seven dollars per unit, per quarter, so it's not per month. Anybody have any, I know we had a public hearing again, I'll ask each time though, is there anybody that wishes to speak on ordinance two thirty-eight, the water? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve ordinance one, ordinance two thirty-eight increasing the water unit service fee five dollars from twenty-two to twenty-seven dollars per unit?
I will make a motion that we approve ordinance number two three eight, increasing the water unit fee five dollars from twenty-two dollars to twenty-seven dollars per unit.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and two thirty-nine is really the same thing, on the sewer side, sewer increases seven dollars from twenty-nine to thirty-six dollars per unit. Anybody wish to speak? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve ordinance two thirty-nine, increasing the water, I'm sorry, the sewer unit fee.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number two thirty-nine, increasing the sewer unit from seven, fee seven dollars from twenty-nine to thirty-six dollars per unit.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Two forty, just peddling solicitation, one of you want to give us a brief, give a brief update for the record, a brief summary?
Sure, actually, ordinance two forty and two forty-one, they're basically housekeeping, our staff put a work group together, and we're actually going chapter by chapter through our code, updating different items throughout that. Actually, ordinance two forty pertains to chapter one thirty-nine, peddling and solicitation, and we felt that we had to make some changes in there to bring it more up to modern standards. This was more so, both of these ordinance were centered around, heavily around the police department, and how to receive a peddling certificate, and also the unlicensed vehicles. So, last month I gave it to you for review, this month we're coming back to you folks for introduction, and then next, next month, public hearing and adoption of that.
Very good, anybody have any questions or comments?
I do. Could you review the definition for solicitor, you've got in there that it includes political candidates, but then when you go to exemptions, political candidates are exempt. I think they're only exempt from paying a certain fee. That's what I'm getting, I just want clarification, that's all.
Yes, I don't believe political candidates, as Council Person Wilder mentioned, are required to go, to require-
But they are considered-
A solicitor, because they're going to work the door.
Got it, so that's the, that's the clarification I was looking at, they're considered soliciting or solicitor, but they are at the same time exempted.
Exempt from the payment of the fee, there you go.
Got it.
That is correct.
Okay.
And also, when we- And also, when we talk about that, if I'm not mistaken. Correct, I believe further in that it talks about, uh, uh, fire department, let's say personnel are exempt. If the, if it's actual fire department, if they're working for the fire department, of course, they have to go through the photograph process and, you know, everything like that.
I just wanted to make sure that I had it straight.
You are absolutely right, Councilperson Pacelli, yes.
Any other questions?
No, good.
Okay, so again, those, those are being introduced tonight, not voted on, so we'll have a, a month to consider changes prior to next month. Alright, brings us to questions, comments from the community. Nobody want to talk about the budget tonight? Do have three folks that signed up to speak, and we'll get to anybody that didn't sign up too. Based on this, I feel like, there's three gentlemen, you guys may be here to speak about the same thing. You guys want to do it together or independently? Or do you, or do you want to, you, you want to designate one guy? Okay. If, if you don't mind, we don't have the whole room mic'd, so you're able to cuss at us and mumble and that sort of thing, it can't, it doesn't get picked up.
Alright. Thank you for hearing us. I'm here, uh, we are here on-
If you don't mind before you get going, do you mind stating your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom Kirk.
Okay.
And I live on Mindy Drive.
Okay.
And, um, uh, as the, um, the new developments came, uh, came into being down on Southwest, the traffic, of course, has been increasing and increasing and increasing. And, you know, to be perfectly honest, in the past year, I would say, uh, the speeding has increased exponentially. Particularly when they, once, whoever lives down Southwest, they make a, they make a left on to Mindy. And they, they're going, I know they're going at least forty miles an hour on that road, I know they are. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm out there early walking my dog and this and that, whatever. And, uh, you know, I'll stand out there, sometimes they slow down, sometimes they speed up. They just don't, you know, they're not taking it very seriously. They, um, we've had, you know, with, with all the new housing, it's just been increasingly getting worse and worse and worse. We've also had, uh, issues with, um, pizza deliveries. I know three in particular that, um, you know, they, they were just, uh, one was from Genovas, one was from Pizza to Go, I'm not sure of the, what the other one was. And, I mean, they were just high tailing up that road and, and going both ways. And, uh, again, uh, I go out there and slow, and try and slow them down and they just keep on going. So the last time was just like last week, um, my wife called because she was really, really upset. And she called the establishment of where they, where the car was, was from and explained to them they didn't want them to lose their job, but, you know, there's a twenty mile an hour lim, speed limit in that, on that neighborhood. And there's no way that you were going twenty miles an hour. So I don't know what happened to that, but, you know, after three times, we were just kind of fed up with it, so that's what we did. So basically, I am here, or we are here, to try and do something about the speeding. Now, I know just recently they put up a monitor, um, I don't know how that's going, I know around four-thirty, I saw a very, very new Corvette drive past that and at least going forty miles an hour. In fact, they, they almost sped up when they saw it instead of slowing down. Some people are adhering to it and some people are not, it's just, you know, it's just the way it is. Um, the, the main thrust of the traffic is in the morning when people are going to work and then coming home, you know, from work, so those are the two main times. I'm not saying it doesn't happen at all during the course of the day, but particularly in the morning, it's really, really crazy. And, um, you know, um, you know, our kids are grown, but we have our grandkids coming in and they're visiting and, you know, it's just, it's not a safe environment. It just is not.
You guys don't have sidewalks either, right?
No, there's no sidewalks, no, no sidewalks, no lights. So, uh, once they make that left on, left on to Mindy and they head up from Southwest, I mean, there's just like, there's no stopping them. I mean, and it's, it's, yeah, it's men, women, and, you know, it's, it's whatever. There's no, it's trucks, SUVs, you know, it runs the gamut as far as that's concerned. So, um, we are here, I know it's a long shot, um, I know in my son's neighborhood in Timonium, they have these, these speed bumps that are not real bad, but they're just kind of graduated. And they kind of, they, they've had them for, they're for probably ten years and it's really made a difference in the neighborhood. I know it's probably going to take a long time. I'm just for, right now, or we are just for, to at least put a stop sign down at Patricia Court and Mindy Drive. So that way, when the cars are coming up from Southwest, they can't get ahead, they can't get a good start, they'll have to stop. They'll have to adhere to that and then proceed up, so that will slow them down. I'm not gonna say it's gonna, I'm, I'm not saying it's the end-all, but I'm just saying it's a place to start. And, um, you know, that's kind of-
How much roadway is from Southwestern to Patricia Court though, when you turn on Mindy?
Three houses, isn't it?
Yeah, not a lot, but they, they get started. So, I mean, I, I, you know, I'm just thinking about a stop sign as far as an intersection goes, that's really the only intersection until you get up to Burke Fowler. So I'm not sure, again, what the ordinances are for stop signs and yielding and all that jazz, but I know, I, you know, to me, it will at least slow them down for a bit. Because they, that's, that's the main thrust of the speed in the morning.
How significant is the grade right there?
I think my neighbors can adhere to that.
How significant is the grade at Patricia and Mindy? It's pretty flat?
Yeah, it's relatively flat.
I know it's bent, I just can't picture it, you know.
Yeah, it's a slight incline, but it's not a lot. I mean, and once you get towards Burke Fowler, then it kind of curves and it goes up a little bit. But there, it's just like a raceway from, you know, from Southwest to, you know, up to that, up to that spot.
Steve, I know that Chief's not here, but have they been sitting, I know the signs there, I've seen that myself. But are they actually, have they been monitoring it as far as, you know?
I know they have.
Okay.
The speed trailer's been out on site probably a week.
Yeah, I've seen it.
I know embedded in the trailer, uh, we're able to monitor the number of cars that pass, uh, the time of day when the cars pass, and the, uh, speed when the cars pass. So it gives the officers a better understanding how to zero in on those specific times of the day that they can, uh, put patrol, you know, do patrol out there and speed enforcement.
So can I ask how long that will be there? Is there a set number of days?
No.
Okay.
Right now, it's been there, I guess, for seven days.
Yeah.
Uh, the officer can download the information, what he has for a week, and then, uh, go from there.
The Chief mentioned in his report that the focus in May would be Mindy and Southwest and a few others, so a month maybe, I don't know, but-
Okay.
But May is a focus on that area.
We used to keep it, like, at least two weeks in a spot.
Okay, alright, I, I figured, I just wasn't sure if there was a set time, thirty-day thing or whatever, how that would work, so.
I was just told that Officer Roebach will be in tomorrow and he will probably download that data tomorrow just to see, you know, in that week's time. So they'll know more, they're gonna keep gathering the data.
Yeah, okay.
I also know that they've been in touch with some of the residents in the area and, uh, they want to get, they would like permission to sit in their driveways. Uh, they have to have a permission, you know, form signed, so they, they are allowed to sit in the residents' driveways to monitor, monitor the speed also. It's kind of tough to be in a, in an area up there to be kind of secluded, uh, unless, I guess you would back the patrol car back in Patricia Court possibly. So if, you know, if some residents would give permission for them to sit in their driveway, that'd be, that'd be, that would help them a lot.
Okay, but again, you know, the, the heavy, heavy time is in the morning from, say, seven to eight-thirty.
Correct.
That's, I can, I can tell, you know, I'm out there, I'm out there every morning, I can see them.
You say at four to six, is that what you said?
And then from-
Four to six?
Four to six.
Yeah, they're four to six coming, coming home, yeah.
The, the morning is going out, the evening's-
Rush hour, basically.
From the other end, and they're rushing coming back.
It's the- It's the western bypass. I mean, that's, that's how they travel to get to Route twenty-seven, it's the western bypass.
Yeah, well, if I may, what's on?
Yeah, yeah, I'm-
Are you through?
Yeah, I'm, I'm through.
I don't want to cut you off.
Thank you.
I'm Chuck Schneider, I live at twenty-five sixty-five Mindy Drive, just to add to that, um, years ago, far back as ninety-six, the projection for that housing that, that we're talking about, um, that there was a, a planned extension of Southwestern to go all the way to Cape Horn, believe it or not, never happened for some reason. Now, imagine that that was in the planning, but it didn't happen, so where's all that traffic go? That traffic comes straight down Mindy Drive and down Southwestern, and a high rate of speed, as I said, in the morning and afternoon. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, the roadway, we don't have sidewalks. So that's like an extra wide road and it's pedal to the metal. And you're talking about, excuse me, you're talking about, uh, permission from residents. Police department's had a standing permission from me for twenty years, sit in my driveway, I'm right there in the middle of that. So that's where we stand. I would say that, uh, the best solution would be the stop signs and possibly the, uh, road bu, uh, road bumps. Trying to get the police to be there, you know, there's a lot of other things to do, so.
Well, I, I can tell you, Mr. Schneider, like, the, uh, traffic's the number one complaint that we get, traffic's the number one complaint. Right, doesn't mean it's the only thing that we do, I know you're aware of it.
Yeah, 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 I understand, that, that's why I say something fixed and in a fixed position like the stop signs.
We can take a look at the stop signs.
We'd go a long way, uh, stop signs both sides of Patricia Court and Mindy Drive. As far as sitting and running radar, uh, right there at the corner, sitting right there at the corner of Patricia, uh, shooting radar up Mindy Drive or down Mindy Drive, either way, you're gonna catch them there too.
Well, I, I'm, I'm sorry the Chief's not here tonight, but we certainly can have him get in touch with you and, we, we just have to get a form signed that says that we're allowed to be there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's no problem. But again, but again, I, I would just say that that's, that's, those are temporary fixes that'll last maybe a week, two weeks. And then, uh, as soon as the trailer goes away, as soon as the police, uh, have other things to do in the morning, it picks up and in the evening it picks up. And, you know, again, not having sidewalks, you know, they're walking down the street, little kids are walking down the street. You know, my, my granddaughter came over a couple of weeks ago and darted out to the mailbox. It was scary because, because of the speed that they're going. And, and Mr. Kirk mentioned that they're going forty mile an hour, I disagree with that. I, I've seen them going up there going at least fifty mile an hour in a twenty mile an hour zone. And it's not a few, it's a lot. Uh, yeah, Halloween, street had probably a couple hundred people in the street, uh, pizza guy flying up the road. And the police were there, they were there on the corner, so, you know, the police are not, so, you know, some people would assume that, oh, that's a deterrent. That's a semi-deterrent maybe for some people, but for the most part, you know. So again, a permanent structure, the signs, the speed bump, I think that's the way to go, that would slow it down. And again, you're not talking about a few homes, most of that traffic's coming from where, uh, Councilperson Smith is, is familiar with that area back now I'm talking about. Most of that traffic's coming from there. Once that, and they blow the stop sign there too.
I was gonna say, well, first off, they come out Nevada and they don't even stop, so I mean-
They're not even stopping at Southwestern.
They don't stop at Southwestern, so.
Yeah, when they come down the, uh, when they come up Southwestern, go across Mindy Drive, there's a couple of them that almost, almost take air, the wheels almost come off the ground, I mean, the floor coming out there.
They get a pretty good start if they're at the very bottom of Southwestern, you know, at the very bottom, they can get a pretty good start coming out.
We get some complaints down, it'd almost be humorous, you know, as someone that's concerned about traffic. Well, they'll say, you know, I get it next to the houses, but they'll talk about the area on Southwestern, it's kind of between where you live and like where I live. And they'll say, that's the thoroughfare, right? So it's almost like they view it in their mind as, it's totally fine-
Right, right.
-to put the pedal down in this area because no one lives here, you're like, well, someone does live here.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and kids ride bikes here.
Well, I, I understand, I understand the mentality, you know, when I come up Charmel, I have to check my speed. Charmel's a fairly wide street, again, no, there are no sidewalks and, and it's a straightaway, so you have a tendency to think, I gotta get from point A to point B, I just came off, off of thirty which was backed up in traffic. Now I gotta, now I got an open area, I'm gonna give it a little gas, and you don't think that consciously, but subconsciously you're rolling, so you, you know, if they, once in a while they, you glance down and you realize, oh, I'm going thirty-five mile an hour, it's twenty miles an hour in there.
Right.
And there's a reason, because there are no sidewalks, you've got these little kids running around out there and, you know, the kids on bikes, they don't look. The kids out there just walking across the street or catching up with mommy walking the dog, they're not looking. And people, I, quite honestly, we all know this, they're driving forty-five, fifty mile an hour and I see them leaving in the morning, morning, and they're doing this while they're going forty-five, fifty mile an hour with their cell phone in their hand, so they're not looking. So again, I, I would stress that it would, it would be, uh, it would go a long way to solving, uh, most of the problem with a physical structure, a barrier, and that barrier, I'm talking about a physical structure, the stop signs along with the, uh, road, the speed bumps. Now, I know the speed bumps can be an issue for plowing, I, I, I get that. But if, if we strategically locate just one or two and, you know, we post, we have, we have posting rods where we put for the, um, for the, no, for the, um, yeah, for the plow for, so they can find the, uh, excuse me, the, uh, the hydrants, um, you know, there's a solution to that, so.
Do we have any left in town? We, we've had them in the past, we've had a couple humps, not like parking on speed bumps, but do we have any left right now?
Went through this last year, remember, from Nevada?
Yeah, we, we never, uh, we never followed through with anything, we, we had some samples, we received some, you're talking about the temporary, uh, bumps, yeah, but we didn't move forward with that.
I will donate this to you, just, just to reinforce the idea, if you look at this, um, this is an old map from nineteen ninety-six. If you look at the section of Manchester, it shows, clearly shows, there's a dotted line and that indicates that that's a future roadway. That roadway never happened. So really, in effect, what's happening is those people are living down there, they're driving a mile north on Southwestern, a mile down Charmel, and then a mile back down south on thirty, just to get to a point where they would have been going maybe three hundred feet. So they're in a hurry to get back to that starting point. And I'll give you this, I'll go in there, out of kindness of my heart.
Well, thank you.
My memory of that was, the grade was too much, right? To extend Southwestern, too far down.
Yes, and there was a piece of property in between, uh, the end of the Ward property and Cape Horn Road, right?
It's going back a long way.
I appreciate, I appreciate your time, I get a little emotional about that because, you know, I've seen a few kids in my day, um, run over and mangled and, uh, gotta help them if it happens up there, but, you know, we've all been forewarned, it's been going off for a while. Thank you very much.
Can you guys make sure you have your contact information in case the police want to get into the field?
She, she's got it. Alright, I think that was Mindy Drive, is there anybody that wishes to speak additional, do you mind coming up?
Hi, my name's Rick Ballen, I live on, uh, Broham Court. First mother ever been here, so I don't even know if this is the right form for this. Uh, when I got that little notice on Facebook about the water bill increase and stuff, I kind of got a little bit upset because I'm watching it increase and then over time. My daughter hasn't lived in my house for almost a year, but our water bill never changes, the usage never changes. Both coming in and going out, and I'm tra, and then I see this increased charge and I'm getting a little upset here. So I want to know, like, how is this measured? Do these meters ever get calibrated? I used to work for a pest control company and I used something called a flow meter. And that's what I measured what was coming out of my truck going into these people's houses.
Right.
And over time, these meters would get out of calibration and we'd have to test them. And lo and behold, you'd find, like, it was either measuring, like, more than was coming out or sometimes wasn't measured enough. My meter's twenty-seven years old, how do I know?
How many units do you average, like, on a quarter?
Thirteen thousand, I, what, thirteen, I guess, which is what, thirteen thousand?
Thirteen thousand, yeah.
Right, I've put in, like, low-flow shower heads, it's only basically me and my wife there. We don't do as much laundry, we don't do as much dishes, it's not as many toilet flushes. But it never changes.
Can, um, you able to answer?
Yeah, we can easily, right now, we can do a check on your residents. It's not uncommon for people to use the same amount of water on a quarterly basis. We've seen that, but if it consistently reads the same amount, okay, for years at a time.
Yep.
There could be a problem there, so Kelly can take the time, go out, grab your readings, and then that'll give us a better understanding, uh, you know, if that meter is actually reading consistently. Now, that being said, uh, we can, we can remove that meter, put a new meter in, we can take it out and have it tested. Uh, the way the meters are tested, they're tested at low, medium, and high flow. Normally, in my forty years of experience working in the water department, meters slow down in favor of the customer. They never speed up in favor of the town, that's a, that's just the way it is. So I tell the people, we can send it out and we can have it tested, but this is the way it's gonna come back. So, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna check your readings, uh, we're gonna see if, if- we're gonna, we're gonna check your readings, uh, we're gonna see if, if it is consistent and then, and then go from there. So also, we'll, we'll know for sure if it's been in twenty-seven years, it could've been replaced along the way.
Yeah, I've been in a house since two thousand four and it's never been replaced, so maybe it, you know, I guess from ninety-two to two thousand four-
Right.
I don't know if you'd replace it only being twelve years old.
And we could have, we could have.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I'm, I've said something to Michelle in the office and she's like, what, well, is the triangle moving? Make sure everything's off, you know?
That's correct, it's a small triangle on top of the meter.
Right, and I've turned, you know, you know, I've tested and looked and stared at it, not to move when everything's turned off.
But normally, you know, they'll fluctuate, uh, and we do get reads where, you know, a couple may use ten thousand gallons, two quarters in a row or something like that, uh, you know.
It just seems kinda strange to me that over this amount of time, and now almost a year, my daughter's not living there and yet it still seems to be like the same usage.
People-
I mean, maybe you're right, I don't know, I mean, I'm just kinda like-
People are very consistent. And what we see a lot when you have a family of four, let's say two adults and two children, and, uh, one of the children moves out of the house and goes to college, the numbers will drop off dramatically. Uh, we see that. We get calls all the time, my water bill's so high, well, do you have a teenage son or daughter? Yes. Check the meter before and check the meter after a shower. And then that enlightens the folks on that. But normally, like I said, the, the meter will go in favor of the customer and not in favor of the town.
So you're saying if you put in your meter, then it could make the problem worse?
No, the new meter, no, no, sir. No, sir, the meters that we see, when they come back and they're tested, they're reading on high flow ninety-eight percent, ninety-nine percent accurate. Uh, your new meters, if we put a new meter in, let's say, your house, it'll be stamped on there. That meter will be tested before it leaves the factory. Usually they read about ninety, ninety-nine point eight percent accurate on high flow, ninety-eight percent on medium, and about, uh, ninety-six to ninety-seven percent on low flow. So.
And you have to cross the next threshold, right? So like, if, if he's at thirteen thousand gallons, he would have to get to fourteen thousand.
Yes, we read them in thousand gallons. So-
Yeah, I know.
So if the actual meter reads thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-two, you know, it's still gonna read thirteen thousand, but then you reach another threshold, let, let's say thirteen thousand eight hundred, it's gonna flip over to fourteen thousand.
Well, it also seems like sometimes the quarters-
Mm-hmm.
-it'll be like eighty-two days and then I'll get a quarter where it's a hundred and four days.
Uh, not really.
Oh, I've had, if-
Well, that, that depends on the weather. If our readers can't get out there because of bad weather, but normally they're pretty consistent on that.
Right, normally it's about ninety-two days.
That's correct.
Right, but I've got some that were like way up over a hundred, you know, a hundred, a hundred and four, whatever it was.
It could be because of weather, because if there's snow on the ground or readers can't get out.
Right, and I'll look and I'll say, okay, well, we have extended days here, maybe that's why this one's a little bit higher. But then when you get to one that's lower, the usage isn't lower.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm like, you know-
Well, you're looking at twenty nineteen, uh-
Do your address again. What's your address again?
Uh, two eight one three.
Yes, Broham Court. So, uh, a read that we took in, in, uh, March eleventh, it was thirteen thousand, the quarter before that was twelve thousand, the quarter before that was fifteen thousand. And we can go all the way, you know, back. So you're, you're ranging in that range, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen thousand. So you're not reading thirteen thousand every quarter. You're in that range, which, that's consistent, folks. Folks, we see that all the time, you know.
Is that pretty much normal, what most people use, or what most houses?
Uh, you say it's only you and your wife?
Yeah.
That's a little on the high side, normally a-
Right, that's, that's been for about a year now.
Normally, a couple is usually around ten thousand a quarter or something like that.
Right, if you go back and look at my bills-
But you're in that range, you're in that range.
Yeah, consistently for several years, it's been in like the thirteen thousand.
Uh, we can see probably-
I think.
You've been as high as seventeen thousand. Uh, that's going back to twenty-ten.
Yeah, I don't know what happened there, but, uh, you know, teenage girl, I, I don't know who knows.
There you go. I mean, really, you were, you know, back in thirteen, you were using sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand, fifteen thousand, so, yeah. People are pretty consistent. You know, we see that all the time within that range.
Okay.
So, yep.
Can I have another subject, or does anybody else want to speak? Long as I'm here.
Go ahead.
Have we ever thought about doing a dog park here? Has this ever been talked about before in this area? I don't know, I- The mayor's laughing like, yes, I'm numerous.
I, I'm not laughing at you, there's a little bit of an inside joke there, that's all.
Councilman Wilder and I attended a seminar on dog parks at an MML convention in Ocean City. Um, I can't speak for the mayor and the council. Uh, yes, there has been consideration in the past. Uh, we, we just have to, you know, if we decide to go that route, you know, we have to pick the right spot. Uh, we have to understand, you know, the operation and maintenance that goes into it. So there's a lot of things that, that fall into play.
Right, 'cause I, I mean, lower, like, southern Pennsylvania has them like everywhere. So I was just wondering, like, you know, as built, built up as this community's becoming, there's dogs everywhere. I have two dogs, I have a fenced-in yard, but still they have a mingle or whatever. It's also a way for, like, the community to kinda intertwine and meet each other and that type of thing as well.
Well, I, I can say one, um, I guess in a broader sense, what we've looked at in, in conversation that we've had is, how do we better utilize our parks? Like, how, how do we get more usage and better usage? So that's part of that consideration.
Right, absolutely would be.
Um, you know, all kinds of things, you know, try to convert some of the tennis courts into also being used as pickleball courts. I, I've never seen pickleball played, but apparently people are playing it.
I don't even know what it is, so.
Wow, it gets smaller, like, something between tennis and badminton.
Right, it's just something I brought up to the office one time before, um, you know, obviously Hampstead's bigger and there's more park area down there. We pretty much just have, like, I even said, like, you know, Cape Horn, you know, Cape Horn Park would be great, but apparently that's part of Hampstead and not Manchester.
It's a county.
County.
Right.
It's in their zip code. I think it's outside of their town.
Yeah.
But it's, it's in their zip code, but it, it's a county park.
So that kinda leaves here, you know what I mean?
So, yeah, we have this one-
Can't really have that with kids.
Yeah, and, and this park's like, sometimes busting at the seams, uh, depending on the activity. Uh, and other times it's, you know, there's a lot of folks walking dogs here for sure.
Right, so I've always thought Cape Horn would be the ideal place, 'cause it's never really, like, overly crowded down there, and there's a lot of land down there, so.
Um, an area that might work for that would be West Side.
It's possible, yeah. I, I, I have to agree with the gentleman there, because down at Cape Horn, I see a lot of folks, uh, walk their dogs-
Yeah.
-on the dog pa-, on, on the walking trail. So that, that may be something that we could approach the county with, to see if they would do something down, down there.
'Cause it's really not that, I mean, basically they're cutting the lawn anyway, I guess, however often they cut the grass.
Correct.
All you're really talking about is fencing in a designated area, it doesn't have to be multiple acres, dogs only need so much room.
Yeah.
And you're still just cutting the grass and you're putting up a couple waste stations with bags that they already have down there, basically around the walking trail. So it's really not a whole lot of extra maintenance, the only cost really would be, well, putting in fence. That's it.
Yeah, you, uh, what I've found, uh, some of the dog parks that I, I'm familiar with, they have to be separated, uh, for larger dogs and smaller dogs.
Right, just two separate, right, they usually have a fenced-in area for small dogs and a fenced-in area for larger dogs.
Have you ever visited Charlotte's Quest, the nature center?
Yeah, I've been down there once or twice.
Yeah, I mean, we, we put in some dogs, pet stations, and a lot of people walk their dogs through there.
Right. But in a dog park, you pretty much can let them off the leash where the dogs kinda intermingle or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not the same, but-
Right, 'cause a lot of times when dogs are leashed and then they kinda meet each other, it's almost like, I guess it's like a control thing because they feel like, I guess, threatened because they're tied up on a leash and don't have the freedom to-
Yeah.
-to move. Same thing when you take them to a dog park, it's like when you take them into a dog park, they have like a little area where you take them off the leash before you let them in-
Yes.
-so they're not coming in leashed and feel that, that threatened, 'cause it's just something I, you know, I'd consider or whatever and thought about, 'cause like I've been to a couple of them and I'd rather stay in the state. You ever go to West Manheim, I don't know if you've ever been up to that dog park, but when you park up there-
I don't let my dog out in the dog park.
Right.
She's, she's right here.
Right, it's basically, I, I don't know, that's not a dog, that's a mess.
Aw, hey.
But when you go up to West Manheim, it's, it's such a far walk. I mean, you park up there in this little lot and then you're walking way down this big trail. You can't even see the park from where you park. Now, I've been up Glen Rock and that's probably the ideal, 'cause it's kinda small and it's near the park, but basically, all this is fencing in, you're still cutting the lawn. It's not much different maintenance.
Where would they put something like that at Cape Horn?
I, I couldn't answer that. I know they're-
Yeah, there's a lot of ball fields over there, but-
Yeah.
Yeah, there's all kinds of room up there. Right, that whole area down where it used to be a house or something there, I think. There's still like a well, there's like a well or something there, I guess that-
I think it's pretty, pretty big.
In that area, anywhere, you know?
Yeah.
So, I just thought it'd be a good idea.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll definitely add that back in the conversation.
Okay, what do I do, if somebody contacts me, or what do I do, or?
For the meter, I have your consumption history, if you wanna see that.
I've, I mean, I've got the little things or whatever.
Well, this gives you your history back to twenty-ten.
Okay, all right.
You can look over that, yeah. If you, I mean, if you would like, uh, we, you know, we can remove the meter and have it tested, it's up to you.
I don't know what they expect from us, I don't know. I don't, I don't know what they-
We, we use, we use a third party, uh, we use the Borough Hanover, and, and I don't believe Rodney, they, I don't think they've charged us.
They have in the past and then I-
They have in the past and they haven't.
So what happens is, if it comes, it goes out, it comes back, reading faster, we take care of it, if it comes back reading slower.
Well, they're wrapping up. Does anybody else wanna, wanna speak on anything?
To see the what?
Test it.
To have it tested. So, at the most, it might be twenty-five dollars, but I'm telling, I'm telling you, it's gonna come back in favor of you.
Someone, I think it was Chris Tomlinson, had an article in the paper recently about the upcoming elections, and he mentioned the apathy in Manchester. And I just wanted to go on record to say that, in my opinion, and the opinions that people have spoken to, it's not a matter of apathy, it's because we're happy and satisfied with the people we have here. So there's no reason to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think all of us read those things and just do our best to ignore them.
Yes.
I was very shocked when I scrolled up and I saw his face pop out at me. Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Councilwoman Smith.
Um, I have not had a meeting, so I don't really have anything to report at this time.
Okay. Councilwoman Miller.
All right, coming up is our annual Paint the Town Patriotic, um, initiative, I guess you would call it, where we encourage the local businesses and, um, houses to decorate their house red, white, and blue for the week of Fourth of July in correlation with the fire department's annual carnival. We have a lot of people coming into our town, so we wanna kinda spruce it up. Um, we work in collaboration with the MAMA group and they help organize it and it's bo-, excuse me, it's based off of fan favorites, I guess you could say, and voting at the carnival at the MAMA stand. So there'll be applications available very soon if you're interested. Um, I believe it's ten dollars is what we ask for the, you know, admission cost, um, into the contest, and the money goes into our town scholarship fund.
Very good. Councilman Pacelli.
The next MAMA meeting is May sixteenth, which is this Thursday at noon, it'll be held at Dutch Corner. And just to get ahead of the game, August sixth, keep that in mind, National Night Out.
It's August sixth? All right, Councilwoman Howe.
I have a lot this time. We had a, a meeting last night with the Charlotte's Quest Nature Center, and April the sixteenth, they had the very first Members' Day. And it was a very, we got a lot of positive feedback and it was very awesome. They had a bouncy house, a library story walk, an egg hunt, there were refreshments and yard games. And we managed to get sixteen new members from that day. So that was very positive and we're going to try to plan more things for members. Um, this Sunday, May the nineteenth, is the plant swap at the nature center from one to three. You can bring a plant, get a plant swap. If you don't, give them a couple bucks and take a few plants. There's also gonna be Ask a Master Gardener if you have any questionments, questions. There will be refreshments and there's a dollar raffle for a rain barrel, if you're interested. Um, July the twenty-sixth, they're gonna have a Family Campout Day. It's on a Friday night, it's at the nature center. There's gonna be a small charge per campsite. We're gonna have an outdoor movie and stargazing with the Westminster Astronomical Society will be there. Um, smores and a continental breakfast will be provided. Wow, how's that? And then August, Saturday, the, uh, August, Saturday, August the tenth, will be a community flea market from eight AM to twelve PM. Twenty dollars a table, members will get a discount if you're interested in cleaning out your house before school starts or the summer's this, at the end of summer. Um, so you can do that. And then on Sunday, the fifteenth of September, we're gonna have a give a tree, give a gift tree planting. So if anybody wants to do that, you wanna honor someone or in memory of someone, that's gonna be at the nature center from one to two PM. So they've been working on a lot of activities for the summer, so hope you will enjoy, join us.
All right, very good. Councilman Wilder.
Okay, Planning and Zoning Commission, our next meeting will be next Monday, the twentieth, uh, due to the election being on Tuesday, so we're moving it up one day. Uh, just a couple items on our agenda. We'll review and approve the Carroll County Annual Planning Report as it pertains to Manchester. We're gonna have another concept presentation from Bob Ward for the subdivision off Park Avenue. There have been some concerns expressed that there's already, during rush hour, a pretty significant backup from the lay on Main Street that works its way up Westminster Street. So it happened nearby right there, could add to all that, so just something we're keeping an eye on. And then lastly, uh, we're gonna have a preliminary review of Riley's Garden, which is a three-lot subdivision on Grafton Street. And that's it.
Okay. Trent?
Uh, starting off with sports, we have some sports teams going onto regionals such as, uh, softball, outdoor track, and tennis, as well as, uh, other sports still going on, like lacrosse and baseball. As for fine arts, the band concert was last Friday and